Good evening, everyone. Good evening. The 29th meeting of the 73rd term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Members of the council, due to us being meeting virtually, please note that I'll recognize you by saying your name to call you up to the floor. Once recognized, please state your name again and please speak loudly. In lieu of invocation tonight, I ask everyone to please bow their head for a moment of silent and reflection. Thank you. Now we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. Please turn to a flag, pull one up on your computer, and please state the Pledge of Allegiance. Our showcase this evening is by Dr. Wendy Lane of the University of Maryland School of Medicine and the University of Maryland Medical Center. Dr. Lane is an expert in preventative medicine and is here tonight in part of the American College of Preventative Medicine's Vaccine Competent Campaign. Ms. Lane, the floor is yours. It appears that Dr. Lane is having a little trouble joining. What we'll do, we'll go into roll call, and if Dr. Lane is able to join, we'll kick it back off. So Madam Clerk, if you could please call a room.
Ms. Mosby, Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos. Mr. President, we have a question.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We now proceed to the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of the February 22nd, 2022 proceedings are on the councilmember's desk.
Without objection, the journal is now adopted, will be adopted. Hearing and seeing none, the journal is now adopted. Communications from the mayor can be found at the beginning of page two of your agenda. We'll now turn to executive nominations. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the first nomination.
EA 21-0094 Erica Fox, Member Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee. Madam Clerk.
EA 21-0095 Tisha Guthrie, Member Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee, Madam Clerk.
EA 21-0096 Anthony Williams, Member Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission.
This nomination has been signed to Rules and Oversight Committee, Madam Clerk.
EA 21-0097 Denise Williams Riley, Member Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee, Madam Clerk.
EA 21-0098 Robert Charles Brendel, Member Environmental Control Board.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee, Madam Clerk.
EA 21-0099 Christina Delgado, Member Environmental Control Board.
This nomination has been signed to Rules and Oversight Committee, Madam Clerk.
EA 21-0100 Andrew Flax, Member Environmental Control Board.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee, Madam Clerk.
EA 21-0101 Melvin Jatalang, Member Environmental Control Board.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee, Madam Clerk.
EA 21-0102 Zoe Reduski, Member Environmental Control Board.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee, Madam Clerk.
EA 21-0103 Carlillian Thompson, Member Environmental Control Board.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee, Madam Clerk.
EA 21-0104 Alice Walpita, Member Environmental Control Board.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee, Madam Clerk.
EA 21-0105 Robert Shelton, Member Board of Finance.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee, Madam Clerk. I believe that is the last one. I will now turn to bills to be introduced. Madam Clerk, if you could please read 22-201 into the books.
City Council Bill 22-0201 Sale of Property 4601 East Monument Street. For the purpose of authorizing the mayor and city council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale all its interest in certain property that is located at 4601 East Monument Street and is no longer needed for public use and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor is President Mosby by request of the Baltimore Development Corporation.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee, Madam Clerk, 22-202.
City Council Bill 22-0202 Residential Parking, Residential Permit Parking Program, Fels Point Area Amendment. For the purpose of amending the boundaries of the Fels Point Area Residential Parking Permit Program, revising area parking restrictions, creating new program eligibility standards, and generally relating to the Fels Point Area Residential Permit Parking Program. Sponsor is Councilmember Cohen.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This bill has been assigned to Economic Community Development Committee, 22-203, Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 22-0203 Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R8 Zoning District, 2223 Calow Avenue. For the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R8 Zoning District on the property known as 223 Calow Avenue as outlined and read on the accompanying plaque. Sponsor is Councilmember Torrance.
This bill has been assigned to Economic Community Development Committee. That will conclude the bills to be introduced tonight. Before we jump into resolutions, I believe we have Dr. Lane on now, so we're going to jump back on the agenda. As discussed prior, she's going to present for the University of Maryland School of Medicine, University of Maryland Medical Center. Dr. Lane is an expert in preventative medicine and is here tonight as part of the American College of Preventative Medicine's Vaccine Competent Campaign. Dr. Lane, the floor is yours.
Thank you, and I apologize for having some difficulties logging in. Am I able to share a presentation, some slides, or?
Yes, you could. Yes, you could share some slides.
Let's see.
You should have control now.
I think I do. All right, are you able to see the slides?
We can see your slides, Dr. Lane.
Okay, great. So, thank you. My name is Wendy Lane. I'm representing the American College of Preventive Medicine, and as Mr. Mosby mentioned, I work and practice at the University of Maryland School of Medicine. I also practice at LifeBridge Health. And as you all know, we're about to enter the two-year mark for the COVID-19 pandemic. I wanted to let you know a little bit about the role preventive medicine can play and address some of the delays in preventive care due to the pandemic. As a member of ACPM, I volunteered to be an ambassador for the Vaccine Competent Campaign, where we educate people about all vaccinations, both COVID and routine, and we spread awareness about their safety and efficacy. So Maryland, as you know, has been a state leader when it comes to COVID-19 vaccinations. Seventy-four percent of Marylanders are fully vaccinated, and seventy-nine percent of people ages five and up are fully vaccinated. And Maryland ranks ninth among states in the U.S. for fully vaccinated individuals. There have been some disparities, though, between Baltimore City and Baltimore County in vaccination rates, hospitalization, and mortality rates. ACPM and I recognize that Baltimore City has had some challenges that make vaccination more difficult here than in other counties. And I did want to give a shout out to the efforts of the Baltimore City Health Department to improve vaccine uptake. They have initiated campaigns throughout the city to educate residents. And they have done that through healthcare providers, through community health workers, through community leaders. And I'm proud to say that my preventive medicine residents and also my colleagues at Be More for Healthy Babies have played a role in this effort. While the transmission rate remains low, we still need to be vigilant and continue to wear masks when needed and also getting tested when we have symptoms. And the Baltimore City Health Department has also been active in helping get testing out to residents. But our biggest priority really needs to be encouraging Baltimoreans to protect themselves, their families, their children, and their neighbors through vaccination, and that includes boosters. One other note is that it's also really important for Baltimoreans to catch up on healthcare that they may have missed during the pandemic. And there have been record-low routine vaccinations across the country. More than 22 million infants and small children have missed their measles vaccines because of COVID-19. So it's really important to catch up on vaccinations and also for adults and kids to attend their routine checkups to make sure that they're healthy and do routine screening and also do get their vaccines. For more information on COVID-19 prevention methods, vaccines, and also the Vaccine Competent Campaign through ACPM, you can visit vaccineconfident.org. And you can also submit questions through vaccineconfident.org and get a response from a preventive medicine physician. So Maryland is doing a good job, and we need to keep working on it. So thank you so much for your time. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you so much, Dr. Lane. We really appreciate you sharing the information. We understand and know that our cases have gone down significantly. It's still important for us to be vigilant and be educated and engage our population on what is going on. So we appreciate the time for you to present, not only to the city council, but to the citizens of Baltimore tonight. And whenever you need to come back, please don't hesitate to reach back out to us.
Thank you for having me.
Have a great night.
You, too.
Now, council, we're going to turn over to resolutions. We'll now read in the the resolutions. Before we go into that, Madam Clerk, I just want to make sure everyone has the updated agenda from Natawana. I believe it should have hit your inbox around like 5:04. There was a lag there from the Executive Secretary. We're all good? All right, perfect. Madam Clerk, if you could please read in 22-95R.
Council Resolution 22-0095R Baltimore City Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, Baltimore Together, a Platform for Inclusive Prosperity. For the purpose of adopting Baltimore City's Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, Baltimore Together, a Platform for Inclusive Prosperity and Providing for a Special Effective Date. Sponsor is Council President Mosby by request of the Baltimore Development Corporation.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. As I stated earlier at lunch, you know, excited about the effort and the energy that Baltimore Development Corporation has put behind ensuring that there's inclusive prosperity as it relates to equity. What we've talked to them about in private and what I'll state publicly is, you know, equity is not a now, it's a verb, right? And as it relates to the action moving forward, we ensure that this plan that they put so much time and intention and energy behind, it helps guide and lead the decisions associated with the Baltimore Development Corporation. We understand and know what institutions and systems have done to our city and to our communities for decades upon decades. As we continue to try to fight to dismantle them, it's important for us to adopt plans like this, but also execute on them as it relates to everything that we do. So excited about the leadership over there and taking this path and excited that this council will ensure that we're working step by step to ensure that the equity piece is built into the decisions that come out of the Baltimore Development Corporation. This resolution has been assigned to Economic Community Development Committee. Madam Clerk, please read in 22-96R.
Council Resolution 22-0096R Approving the Submission of an Application to the State of Maryland for the Redesignation of Baltimore City's Modified Consolidated Enterprise Zone and its Focus Area. For the purpose of approving the submission of an application to the state of Maryland to re-designate Baltimore City's Modified Consolidated Enterprise Zone and its Focus Area. Sponsor is President Mosby by request of the Baltimore Development Corporation.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This resolution has been assigned to Economic Community Development Committee. Madam Clerk, please read in 22-97R.
Council Resolution 22-0097R Request for State Action Highway User Revenues. For the purpose of calling upon the Maryland General Assembly to pass and Governor Lawrence J. Hogan to sign, Senate Bill 726, House Bill 1187, Transportation Highway User Revenues, Revenue and Distribution. Sponsors are Councilmember Ramos and Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, I'd like to recognize sponsor of the resolution, Councilwoman Odette Ramos. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues. This is a resolution urging the governor, the General Assembly to pass and the governor to sign Senate Bill 726 and House Bill 1187. This would significantly increase the highway user revenues that we deserve here in Baltimore City and across the state. The highway user revenues are the gas tax and a few other similar types of taxes that go for improvements to our bridges and roads and for traffic calming. And we, since 2007, have had a formula change at the general, at the state level. So now Baltimore City is only getting about 7.5% of those revenues. And this bill would get us up to 12.1%, similar to where we were before. And back in that time, when the calculation changed, it changed so much that between then and now, we've lost $900 million of that revenue. And so we need that back. We have the, we take care of the state roads here in Baltimore City. We're the only jurisdiction that does that. So we need those revenues to help us with making sure that we're maintaining our roads, our bridges, and to put in the traffic calming that all of our residents have been insisted upon. And so this is the number one, the number one piece of legislation that the Maryland Association of Counties is also working on. And Council Vice President and I serve on the Maryland Association of Counties Legislative Committee. And so so many of us will be down in Annapolis this week testifying on this bill. And it's extremely important to be able to get an additional up to $50 million to help Baltimore City. And so I'd like to yield, if I can, Mr. President, to the Council Vice President for a few words from her as well.
Madam Vice President, would you like to add on to what Councilwoman Ramos stated?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Councilwoman Ramos, for introducing this bill. This is a very important bill, and I think one of the reasons that the Maryland Association of Counties is really supportive of this bill because they understand as an organization how Baltimore City is the economic engine of our entire state. And the Maryland Association of Counties is represented by every single county and this city. And you also keep in mind, too, that, you know, we have infrastructure like JFK Route 83 where it is heavy traffic in and out of our city. We still have a lot of people that work in this city, that live outside of the city and use all of these connecting roads. As Councilwoman Ramos mentioned about, we have bridges and things that need repair. In the 11th district, we hear all the time Councilmember Costello talking about that Hanover Street Bridge. We have several it died, infrastructure needs in this city. And these funds will also create, and as our president has mentioned just a few minutes ago about equity, this will help create new reconnecting communities. We can think of pilot, this goes very far with helping with our climate control. So please, if I'm sharing this with anyone out there, send your support in to this, for this infrastructure bill. It is so important for our city and also around, you know, the entire state of Maryland. Thank you.
No, thank you, Madam Vice President. At this point, I'd like to recognize Councilwoman Ramos for immediate adoption.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Madam Vice President, for your words. This is an extremely important bill. And so I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for immediate adoption.
Second.
Without objection to suspend the rules, the rules will be suspended. Hearing and seeing none, the rules are suspended. I'll turn the floor back over to you, Councilwoman Ramos.
And I move for immediate adoption.
Madam Clerk, if you could please call a room.
President Mosby, Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
The motion is approved. The resolution has now been adopted. Moving on to the consent calendar, you can find the consent calendar in section A at the back of the agenda. Is there motion to approve the consent calendar?
I moved.
Second.
The move in properly second, second, and all those in favor of approving the consent calendar, please say aye.
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 And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the calendar is now approved. We will now move to bills on second reader. At this point, I'd like to recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move, we read short titles for second and third reader for the duration of the meeting and apologize. Trying to find my mute button.
It's all good. At this point, without objection, we will move to short titles for the remainder of the meeting. Hearing and seeing no objections or unreadiness, we will be in short titles for the remainder of the meeting. First up, we're going to go to rules and oversight. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the bill in.
Council Bill 21-0087R Informational Hearing, Office of the Chief Administrative Officer, Annual Review.
At this point, I'd like to recognize Chairman Schleifer.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. The Rules and Legislative Oversight held a hearing on 22-0087R Informational Hearing, Office of Chief Administrative Officer, last Thursday, March 3rd. And so I move the resolution favorable.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in probably second, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Bills on third reader. We can turn to bills on third reader for final passage. Madam Clerk, if you could please read in 21-179.
21-0179 City Property Naming Escape Park in the Joseph H. Rasch Playfield to be Jake's Skate Park. President Mosby, Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
The bill is approved. Now, we're going to move on to committee announcements in no particular order. Chairs, when you hear a committee, please proceed for committee announcements. Before we jump into committee announcements, the Chair of Health, Environment, and Technology, Chairwoman Dani McCray is not on with us tonight. She has an excused absence, but I wanted to make a note of that. There are no new announcements for health, environment, and technology. So first up, we're going to go to Madam Vice President for Economic Community Development Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend the rules to announce a hearing.
Without objections, rules 10-2 and 10-3 will be suspended to announce a hearing. Hearing and seeing, hearing and seeing no objections and unreadiness, the rules are now suspended. Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. On March 22nd, 2022, at 2:00 p.m., we're going to hear Bill Number 22-0095R, the Baltimore City Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, Baltimore Together, a Platform for Inclusive Prosperity. Also, I move to suspend the rules to announce another hearing.
Without any objections or readiness, the rules 10-2, 10-3 will be suspended to announce a hearing. Hearing and seeing none, Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Also, on March 22nd, 2022, at 2:05 p.m., Bill Number 22-0096R Approving the Submission of an Application to the State of Maryland for the Redesignation of Baltimore City's Modified, you know, Enterprise Zone and its Focus Area. And also at 2:10 p.m., we'll hear number, we'll hear Bill Number 22-0192, the Transit and Traffic Empowerment or Immobilization Chronic Offenders by Councilman, sponsor is Councilman Dorsey, and I'm sure he'll be pleased to hear that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Next up, we're going to Education, Workforce, and Youth. Chairman Stokes, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Education, Workforce, and Youth Committee will hold a oversight hearing on Thursday, March 10th, 2022. About yet, at 5:00 p.m. for the City Children and Youth Fund. Also, the Education, Workforce, and Youth Committee will hold a hearing on Thursday, April 7th, 2022, at 10:00 a.m. for the Dante Barksdale Career Technology Apprenticeship Fund. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up, we're going to go to Public Safety and Government Operations. Chairman Conway, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. No announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up, we're going to Rules and Legislative Oversight. Chairman Schleifer, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. No announcements.
And then last, but certainly not least, Ways and Means. Chairman Costello, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, March 15th, at 10:00 a.m. Council Bill 21-01E2 Sale of Property 900 through 912 Baltic Avenue. Ways and Means Committee will also hold a hearing on Tuesday, March 15th, at 10:01 a.m. on Council Bill 21-01E4 Sale of Property 606 South Anne Street. Mr. President, I move to suspend both, I move to suspend both rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
Without objection, rules 10-2 and 10-3 will be suspended. Hearing and seeing no objection or unreadiness, the rules will now suspended. Chairman Costello, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, March 15th, at 10:02 a.m. on Council Bill 21-0201 Sale of Property 4601 East Monument Street. And finally, the Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, March 15th, at 10:03 a.m. on Council Bill 22-0190 Repeal of Ordinances 08-94, 08-95, and 08-96 Westport Waterfront Development District, Westport Special Taxing District, and State Obligations Pledge. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. At this point, we're going to move to regular announcements. Members, if you have any regular announcements, please raise your hand. Once you hear your name called, we will turn to you. Councilwoman Odette Ramos, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, colleagues. I just wanted to let everybody know. Those of you who've been around for a while know Cindy Leahy has been in the District 14 office for many, many years. She is retiring, and we wish her well in her retirement, and you'll hear more details later. But bear with us if we're a little slow on the take. Obviously, she was, she's a very important member of our office. But she is, she's retiring, and we will miss her, but she's got, you know, well-deserved with all of her 14 years of service to Baltimore City.
Are there any additional announcements? Hearing and seeing none. At this point, I'd like to recognize Madam Vice President to close us out.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next meeting of the city council will be held on Monday, March 21st, 2022, at 5:00 p.m. And may we have a moment of silence for the now 59 homicides to this date of, up to this date of March, I'm sorry. Now, we have a moment of silence for 30, for 59 homicides and also a moment of silence for the for the continued opioid epidemic and people that are still suffering from loss of COVID.
Please bow your heads for a quick moment of silence. Thank you. There being no new business before the desk, this concludes the 29th meeting and the 73rd term of your Baltimore City Council. Baltimore, we love you.